All this meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order at 7:01. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our secretary, Mary Ann, is away today, and she has designated Rich Strony to serve in her absence, so I will appoint Rich to serve as the secretary of this meeting as well, since he's in her seat. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Andrew Urbano- Urbanoitz.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner, absent. Kelly Davis.
Here.
Charles Masterbirdy.
Here.
Timothy Neville.
Here.
Richard Strony. Here. Robert Kwasnicki.
Here.
Catherine Plopper.
Here.
For fire evacuation notice, there's two means to exit this room. One is straight behind the audience, out onto the town green. The other is on the doorway to the audience's right, down the stairs, and out to the parking lot. Do we have a town attorney's report?
Unless there was... I'm sorry. Unless there was something in your packet, I do not have anything.
Okay. Nope, there wasn't, so I guess we don't... We don't have any old business, so we're on to the legal ad. Mr. Secretary, could you please read the legal ad? What's this thing?
ZBA 2022-04-14 for 1375 Enfield Street, appeal of the ZEO's cease and desist order for section thirty... Or three dot thirty dot twelve. Devon Terhune, applicant owner, MAP 18, Lot 243, HR 33 Zone.
Read the second one, too. Then you don't have to read the other.
Okay. And then, ZBA 2022-05-10, 160 Spring Street, request for variance to section six dot ten dot one, reduce side yard setback on south side to 10 feet from the required 25 feet. Section six dot ten dot one, reduce front yard setback to Spring Street to 12 feet from the required 40 feet. Section six dot ten dot two A, reduce the required 50-foot front buffer to zero. Section 10 dot 10 dot two, eliminate required additional parking stalls. Section 10 dot 10 dot eight, eliminate required additional loading areas. Section 10 dot 10 dot six, parking area landscape standards. Section 10 dot 10 dot seven, parking area design requirements. And section 10 dot 20, general landscaping requirements. Andrew J. Crane, applicant, Spring Street Holdings LLC, owner, MAP 21, Lot 2, I-1 Zone.
Okay. So, for the first hearing, the 1375 Enfield Street, I see the applicant is forward. I'm going to state for the record that I'm recusing myself from this matter, and that Vice Chairman Neville will be taking over the meeting.
Thank you. We'll come get you.
Is someone going to be sitting in your place in terms of voting?
Oh, yes, I need to do that, too. So, I appoint Kathy Plopper to serve in my place for this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I have a few handouts, so...
Susan, just a second. We have just a couple of things to do here. First of all, just, Mr. Secretary, could you please take the attendance for this hearing itself, please?
For this hearing, yes. Timothy Neville.
Here.
Charles Masterbirdy.
Here.
Kelly Davis.
Here.
Robert Kwasnicki.
Here.
Catherine Plopper.
Here.
Richard Strony, present, and Andrew Urbanoitz has recused himself.
Very good. Thank you.
And as far as seated, Robert is the alternate for this one?
No.
I'm sorry.
Andrew chose...
He did.
I'm sorry. Andrew's not on this one. That's correct. Sorry.
He's taking Andrew's place for this particular one. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming up.
Sure.
Attorney Landelina.
Yes.
Landelina.
Landelina, yeah.
Sorry about that.
No problem, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome back.
Good evening.
We invite you here to present the information on the variance requ... On the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Carl Landelina, Fahy and Landelina, 487 Spring Street in the town of Windsor Locks. If I may approach, I have a couple of handouts that I'm going to refer to during the evening. They're already in the record, essentially. By...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You documenting the sign for the public hearing? I already did that, but it's gonna... I'm gonna use it for another purpose as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Attorney Landelina.
Yes.
I have an extra one.
Okay, you felt a little thick over there. So, once again, good evening. I am here representing the owners of 1375 Enfield Street. The named appellant is Devon Terhune. Mr. Terhune and his father actually own the property. Devon's brother, and the father's son, actually, Dugan Terhune, is with me. He is the occupant of... He's the permanent occupant of the premises and the activities, as you may recall, from about six or seven months ago. We were here before, and those activities that were alleged to violate the zoning regulations had to do with Mr. Terhune's activities, so he's actually the party in interest, so to speak. So, I gave you a couple of things. I'll talk about them in a few minutes. One is the sign, posting of a sign. It's a picture. I'm going to refer to that in a different way. I've provided that to Nicole Maruka. She has it as evidence the sign went up. We have Mr. Chairman submitted to Mr. Rochelli an affidavit. That sign has been up continuously since April 22nd, so it's been just about a month. And the other are two pages out of the zoning regulations, section on definitions, which I'm going to go over with you. For those of you who didn't bring your regulations or otherwise have the entire set memorized, okay, we'll refer to these. So, again, as you do recall, and I mentioned a few seconds ago, Mr. Terhune and I were here back, I think, in the winter, November, December, sometime in that timeframe, because he had received a cease and desist order from Mr. Rochelli. The claim was that he was operating business out of that location. And what we described to you, or tried to describe to you, was sort of a hobby of Mr. Terhune's, where he takes riding lawnmowers and snow blowers, and takes parts from one, puts it into another to get it running again, and then would dispose of that essentially by giving it away or selling it or what have you. He had, for a while, been placing lawnmowers for sale in his front yard, and I think that's probably what drew attention to him. But in any event, we withdrew that after hearing and told the zoning enforcement officer that we would comply, that we would be not using the residential property as a place of business, if it ever was one, under those circumstances. I can say to you that I do recall this very specifically, and when speaking to my client today in preparation for this hearing, he recalled it very specifically, and I don't want to pick on Mary Ann, who's not here, and I'm not picking on her, but I... During that discussion, I very clearly remember her saying, "Well, this isn't going to stop you from doing your hobby, which is fixing these machines." Apparently, the zoning enforcement officer feels otherwise, because shortly after we had withdrawn and told him we were going to comply with his claim that we were operating a business, we got a cease and desist, or first a notice of violation, then a cease and desist, claiming that Mr. Terhune was operating a junkyard at his house in 1375 Enfield Street. And as you probably know, junkyards are a permitted use in every zone in the town of Enfield. And so, our basic claim is that we are not operating a junkyard. If you look at the definitions in your regulations, and that's why I provided the two pages to you, we do not meet those definitions. We are not... The materials that... Or the lawnmowers and the snow blowers that Mr. Terhune collects and brings to his property are not junk by the very definition of your regulations, and therefore, we cannot be operating a junkyard if what we have there isn't junk. So... And this isn't... I've done many junkyard cases. I'm sure you've had a few in the past, Rick. And when I look at this property... Junkyards, usually you've got a guy who's a collector or hoarder, maybe, and just grabs stuff, and it's... Has no use. It just sits in the backyard and deteriorates, and they... People refuse to throw stuff they've collected away because they're very much into their collection of stuff. That's not what we have here, and Mr. Terhune is going to testify to that. But I want to take you very briefly, and so the first page has the definition of junk. It's at the bottom. It's number 61. And this is, as I said, right from your regulations. So, and I... You know, I'm not an English teacher, and I don't want to parse or... You remember in English, you used to diagram a sentence? I've forgotten long ago how to do that, but there are some important ways in which this has to be read, in my view. So, junk, first off, must be a worn-out, cast-off, or discarded article or material. Let's stop, because the rest of the sentence relies on those three things. It must be first either worn-out, cast-off, or discarded. Okay? Then, if it's one of those three things, we can go and read the rest. Which is ready for destruction, or has been collected or stored for salvage or conversion to some use. Now, there's a missing word here, in my view, because if you read the rest of it, it only makes sense that it probably should say conversion to some other use. You take a rotor disc from the brakes, you turn it into something else. You don't put it back in the car. You put it back in the car, you haven't, under your definition, I believe, haven't converted it to a use. And I think it's really other use. And the reason I say that, if we go on, it says, "Any article or material which unaltered, unchanged, and without further reconditioning, can be used for its original purpose as readily as when new, shall not be considered junk." So, if I take that rotor, that's sitting in my backyard, and put it back into a car, and I don't have to do anything to it to make it suitable for use as a rotor in a car, it's not junk. If I take that rotor and weld stuff on it, or materially change it, and convert it to some other use, I don't know what it would be used for, then it can be considered junk. So, the issue is, what do we have at 1375, and how is it used? Is it worn off? Is it worn out, cast off, or discarded? All right? That's our... The main premise. That's where you have to start. And then, if you go to the definition of junkyard, which is next, it talks about, you know, 100 square feet or more, whether in a building or not, which contains the storage, keeping, or abandonment of junk. So, you have to read the definition of junk first before you can be... You have to meet that definition before you can be a junkyard. All right? So, please keep that in mind as we go through this. And right now, I don't know if you want to put my client under oath. Do you do that, or... Okay. So, this is Mr. Terhune. You identify yourself, your name and address for the record. You can pull the whole thing over. We'll share.
Dugan Terhune, 1375 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut.
And are you the permanent resident of the property there?
Yes, I am.
And who owns that property?
My brother and father.
Okay. And do they live out of state?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And how long has your family resided there?
Maybe close to 50 years.
All right. So, Mr. Terhune, can you describe your hobby to the board? What is it you do with these items that the zoning enforcement officer believes are junk?
Well, I will obtain a lawnmower or a snow blower. I will use parts from one machine and put them on a different machine.
Let me stop you right there. Do you have to alter or change the condition of those parts before you use them in another machine?
No. No.
Okay. All right. So, you can continue. So, at some point, though, wouldn't... It seems to me that after I've... I don't want to use the word cannibalize, but after I've taken everything that's useful off of one machine, what happens to the carcass or whatever is left?
They're immediately disposed of off-site.
All right. So, you have no pieces of these machines that have no use laying around your property?
No.
Okay. Can you also tell us how many motor vehicles you have at your residence?
Five registered motor vehicles and one that is not currently registered.
All right. And being registered, those are all roadworthy vehicles?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So, I don't want to belabor this point, but let me just ask you directly. So, the articles and materials which are in your yard, all right, are used as parts for other lawnmowers or snow blowers, without being unaltered, unchanged, and without further reconditioning? Is that your testimony?
Yes.
Okay. So, one of... So, let's go on to the picture here, which I provide to you. Now, normally, I was going through and preparing for this evening, and obviously, I had to make a copy of the picture. I sent it to Ms. Maruka. She wanted evidence that the sign was up. We provided the affidavit. And I was looking at it, and I said, "I've driven by a lot of places where there's a lot of junk everywhere." I don't know. I know it's only... We didn't take this specifically for this purpose. It just dawned on me this afternoon. That's not typically the way a junkyard or a person who collected junk usually have it everywhere. But, look, this is a very nice home in the historic district on Enfield Street. You can see it's very well-maintained. Matter of fact, the gentleman who maintains it, more often than not, is sitting here and may have something to report to you. So, to the extent that you find that evidence, I just present it for your review. So, I don't know... The other thing I want to talk about, and this is sort of a legal issue, but you've been doing this a long time. I think you'll understand it. This is the issue of burden of proof. Whose burden is it here in this matter? Does the zoning enforcement officer have the burden of establishing to you by substantial evidence? That's the standard in zoning cases. I don't want to see it's like doubt, you know, reasonable doubt or anything like that. It's not that high. But the substantial evidence, all right, more likely than not, is it his burden to establish to you that this is a junkyard? Or is it our burden to establish to you it's not? And I would submit to you, the burden lies on the city in this case. So, he has to present to you substantial evidence before you this evening, I think, from which you can make a finding that this is a junkyard, because what Mr. Terhune has in his backyard constitutes junk. All right? I've seen a couple of photographs, and I asked Mr. Rochelli, under an FOI request, to provide to me everything he had, and he's provided me a couple of photographs. I don't know that there's anything new since... And they... I'd assume they're in your package? Are they in the committee's package?
Yes, we have. ZBA has everything.
Okay.
Whatever you have, we have.
So, I'm sure... Again, I'm not trying to put words in Rick's mouth. Rick and I go back a very long way, and I've never done that, and I wouldn't. But... So, what I received was this, right? I can't tell from that that there's really anything behind the fence, but certainly not substantial evidence to satisfy the burden that this is worn off and discarded, worn-out, cast-off items. And then, we have one more photograph, I assume from the street, showing, you know, surprise, surprise. I think that might be a snow blower or a lawn tractor doing that is? A lawn tractor at the end of the driveway. And then, two overhead shots showing the condition of the property. Now, I guess I'll wait for Mr. Rochelli to testify, but my client is ready to tell you that these pictures, I assume from Google Earth or something, are years old. They don't... The property does not look like this today. This flyover is very dated. So, I guess with that, I would let Rick take over and...
Mr. Rochelle?
So, if you remember, going back to, it was actually January 24th, wherein Mr. Terhune came before this board for operating a business. And at that time, the same pictures were presented to you. There was a discussion during the meeting about the other items, which appear to be junk vehicles and other lawnmowers on the back of the property, that area amounted to about 16,000 square feet when it was measured out with the GIS. Through... It's difficult sometimes through just taking pictures, as those there, if they were printed out on a colored printer, they might have come out a little bit clearer, but you can see through the fence items behind the fence. During that meeting, they offered... They offered this board and myself the ability to go and inspect the property. They chose not to do that and chose to just say that we will abide by the regulations, which eliminated the ability to do an inspection. However, one of their witnesses at the time did say that the property was cluttered, quote-unquote, during her testimony to this board. The aerial photographs are over a number of years, from 2017, 18, and 19 on Google Earth, and there are years where the items actually increase in number and some decrease. But the issue of the junk on the property, what we can consider, or what I consider junk, because we haven't had the opportunity to inspect it, is fairly clear on the photographs in the reports and attached. And as for the definition, the definition doesn't say other use. It says what it says. So, the materials there, I guess, maybe junk is in the eye of the beholder, and whether or not it can be used for something else, the only way we can determine that is if there's an actual inspection of the property. And 10 square feet... I'm sorry, 10 square feet measures 100 square feet of actual junk, according to the regulations and the definition of what junk is and a junkyard is. So, I would say that between the reports and everything else that you've been given, it would appear that without an inspection of the property, they offered it at one time, then determined or decided against it, there's no way to determine what exactly is junk on the property unless it's inspected.
So, Mr. Rochelle, you're saying you don't know if there's junk or not on the property because you can't inspect it? Is that your testimony?
Am I being cross-examined here, or are the questions going to be asked by the board? No, I'm sorry. The board... The commissioners need to ask questions.
With all due respect, I... The Connecticut Supreme Court, especially because you're acting in a quasi-judicial... This is... You're not being asked to give a variance, all right? This is sort of like a mini-trial, and you're acting almost in a judicial basis. Just for the record, I'll ask my questions through, Mr. Chairman, but I just have to, in case we have to take an appeal to the Superior Court, I have to note my objection on the record, because I do have the constitutional right to cross-examine the zoning enforcement officer directly. But I will ask through you, Mr. Chairman, what I heard him say, and if he's not saying this, I'd like a restatement of the zoning enforcement officer's position, is he doesn't know that there's any junk there because he hasn't been able to look. Essentially, that's how I would judge his testimony.
Why don't we give him a chance to answer? Mr. Rochelle?
I'll answer your question, Attorney Landelina. I drove by a couple days ago, and there was a, I think it was a John Deere yellow and green tractor sitting in the driveway with the hood off and a tire off. I might consider that junk. Based on what I've seen through the fence, I would consider junk. And whether or not it can be used or not, I don't know, but I can give you and the board some pictures taken on May 9th, when Mr. Terhune and one of his associates that blurted out some things during the last meeting, were up at 556 Enfield Street, next to the Dunkin' Donuts, picking up and pulling out a tractor out of a garage up there that looked like junk. So, I'll give this to the board. They can take a look at this.
May I ask when, through you, Mr. Chairman, when he acquired those photographs?
I think he just stated the date, didn't he?
That was May 9th.
May 9th.
Dakota pickup truck, I believe it's one of the pickup trucks that Mr.
So, just again, for the record, I'm object to the admission of those documents, because Mr. Rochelli was duty-bound under my FOI request to provide me a copy. I have not seen these before, so I object to their admission. But again, that's just for the record, should we have to take the next step.
And for the record, they were taken after your FOI request. They were taken on May 19th, and I believe your request was prior to that.
But again, I don't want to argue with the zoning enforcement officer. You have a continuing duty under the law to provide me new information, especially in light of today's hearing, to provide me with this material. But again, that's just for the record. And as far... I haven't seen the pictures, but I'm going to say they probably show what he... What Mr. Rochelli's saying they show. And why would that be unnatural? He works on lawnmowers. So, he's not getting brand-new lawnmowers to take a tire off and exchange it for another lawnmower. He, you know, he's getting older equipment. He's going to use what he can and then discard the rest, because after he's used what he can, which is not junk under your own definitions, the rest of it is junk and needs to be discarded. And that's what happens. He testified what he does.
Are you done? Attorney Landelina?
I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes.
All right, just a minute. Hold on a second. If we... We're going to have the commissioners ask their questions, make comments, both to you and to the staff, and if you would just do it by a... Raise a hand, just so I can...
Attorney Landelina.
Yes.
So, the photos that we have are from Google Earth. Is it your or your client's testimony that those items have been removed? Or that there are no other... Or not those specific items, but...
Yeah. So, why don't I let him answer? Your two photographs at the bottom are, I assume... Mr. Terhune, have you seen those photographs before?
Ah, yes, I have.
Do you know when they were taken, perhaps? Do you have any idea?
I believe these are three years old.
All right. Does your backyard look like that again? Like now, I mean, say?
No, it does not.
All right. And it is hard to tell. There are a number of motor vehicles. I can't count. I can't count. But are, you testified earlier that you had five registered vehicles at that location, and one under-registered vehicle, right? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And are there any other motor vehicles in that, in your property, other than those six?
No, there are not.
Okay.
So, all right, so there's no more than those six vehicles? So, the pictures may not depict exactly the same items that are there.
Right.
Are the rest of, I mean, it is hard to see, but there seems to be other items there. So, I'm just trying to clarify, if our zoning enforcement officer was to inspect the property, what would he, what would he find in the back?
He would find riding lawnmowers and snow blowers.
Roughly estimated quantity?
I can't tell you. I have no idea.
Okay.
There are.
To, this will be a question for you, and then the same for the zoning enforcement officer. Attorney Landalina, what is your definition of the verb salvage? As, and I'm referring to that number 61?
Yep.
So, which is ready for destruction, or has been collected, or stored for salvage? Salvage being a verb in that sentence.
I, I can't answer that. And the reason I can't is that the law says that if you don't have a word that's specifically defined in your regulations, and I don't know if there's a definition for salvage, I suppose I can look, then you have to go to Webster's Dictionary, and I don't know what Webster's would say. All I could give you is anecdotal information. It wouldn't be useful to you.
While you're looking that up, Rick, what would be your definition of the verb salvage?
Any items that were being used to salvage pieces off, take pieces off, and then use for something else. You're salvaging, and you're going to be left with, as he described, he uses parts, and then those he claims that he takes and he discards to the junkyard. That's salvaging. I mean, that's my interpretation anyways.
Attorney Landalina?
Yeah, I'm looking at your definitions, and salvage is not defined there. But I would say to you, in my opinion, that the zoning enforcement officer's definition does not fit with the second sentence in your own regulations, which says, "Any article or material which unaltered, unchanged, and without further reconditioning can be used for its original purpose as readily as when new shall not be considered junk." So, under the zoning enforcement officer's definition, even things which meet that definition would, he would consider salvage. And I guess that's basically the dispute between ourselves.
Understood.
Yep.
Yeah, just clarifying. And just to clarify, Rick, you haven't had a chance to, you have some evidence in what you've seen and photos that you presented here. I guess the question for Attorney Landalina, so why weren't we able to get the zoning enforcement officer to inspect the property as we agreed upon?
Well, we withdrew the case, the matter, so there was nothing left to that, to that application. The law is also very clear that the zoning enforcement officer cannot just knock on your door and ask to look around. They're not allowed to do that. There is a mechanism for the zoning enforcement officer to do that, and he's had six months or so to utilize that, and I've done it myself for towns I represent, is to go to court and get a civil warrant. He's chosen not to. Instead, he's just decided that what's there is junk, and that we should be subject to a cease and desist order. So, we don't, we have a constitutional right not to allow him in our yard without a court order, and that's what we're going. And again, I would say, the case law would also say, you can't infer anything from that. All right? If I don't let you onto my property to look around, you should not infer from that that I'm trying to hide something. We're not trying to hide something. We're telling you what's there. And even if we showed it to Mr. Rochelli, my guess is, what he considers junk, we would consider useful items in our hobby.
So, just to be, so, just for the record, are, is your client willing?
No.
No. Not, willing, okay, so just to be clear, not willing to have the zoning enforcement officer there?
That's correct. We're not willing to allow Mr. Rochelli onto the property without a court order.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else here? Go ahead.
So, Attorney Landalina, I think one of the challenges is, as you said, the words in the number 61 and 62 are open to interpretation, right? You yourself have interpreted them your way. We're responsible to interpret them for the town.
Absolutely, that's your charge, no question.
That supports the historic district and the charge with the neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
You made an example, or you gave an example of a rotor. I doubt there's just a rotor sitting in his yard that he's going to pick up and put on a car. Instead, it's on a car, as an example, to be removed from a car that doesn't work to a car that may work.
Mm-hmm.
And from that perspective, it's being salvaged from one piece of equipment to another. So, I struggle with the example, and again, the definitions based on the way that you're interpreting them. And of course, I have to agree with the zoning enforcement officer. There is no word "other" in there, so we can't arbitrarily insert that.
That is true.
And I would also say that a lot of the equipment, in my understanding, is there for reconditioning for resale in support of his hobby. Would you agree?
It's.
I doubt they're giving you operating equipment to then turn around and just sell because it's in working condition as it exists, without need for repair or modification or reconditioning.
He needs older lawnmowers that may or may not run perfectly.
Right.
To, without, you know, without altering or changing parts, to replace parts.
Right. So, he may take an engine off one to put it on another.
Yep.
That may have the gear shaft in place, or the mechanisms in place, to make the snowblower or lawnmower work effectively.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other challenge, of course, is 100 square feet is a small area, 10 by 10. It's tough to support the claim against the zoning enforcement officer without really understanding the amount of space that it takes up. Right? There are a number of snow blowers, maybe some lawnmowers, one lawnmower, probably three by six, as a guess for a ride-on. I may be under-overestimating. That's already 18 square feet.
Yeah, I would, I would submit to you that there is more than 100 square feet worth of property that's being taken up by his hobby.
Right.
But again, you're reaching for the definition of a junkyard. My position is, don't go there because it's not junk.
And I think that's, again, we established that's the challenge here between.
Understood.
You know, with this commission, we're tasked with understanding, what is the nature of the hobby, and how much of it is really in keeping with the established rules that we have to enforce for the town? Right? Our job is not to make things more difficult. It is to make things easier and better for the residents. And again, I think I said it last time, I respect the ability to do that to machines. I wish I had that skill set, and I don't. I'll pause there, and I'll see if there's any other questions.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I have a couple of questions, even picking up on what you just said, Rick. We all recognize the hobby, okay? And I think just the discussion we had in the past, that, you know, we've gone through the number of machines that he's, that he's had, and he's turned over over the course of a year. I think you gave particular numbers. We could go back to the record and get that.
I don't recall what that was. I remember you asked, and I didn't.
I think, I think, I might have read it as.
Might have been a dozen or something like that?
I think we're closer to 20, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, okay.
I could be wrong. We can check it against the record. But, that 20 machines of the time would take up quite a bit of space, as you said. And you acknowledge that there's more than 10 square feet, or 100 square feet, you know, 10 by 10 space that's going to take these things up. I think the question that we had had at that time was also, what is the process going on here in terms of whether it be repairing mechanical equipment, requiring, repairing things that, with gasoline engines and so on? I think there are particular rules in there about that. There was a question that was raised there, about saying that it's, that it's totally happening, or to what extent, I don't know. But I think that was a legitimate question that, that the folks had raised in there. I think the, the idea of how many is important. How many vehicles, partial lawnmowers, partial snow blowers, and how long have they been there, and so on? That's a legitimate question. And I noticed that in the application, and because you said, you, he's not going to authorize somebody to come on there, and there's a, you gave a specific way to do that. But on the bottom of the application, it talks about, it says, "The undersigned hereby permits town staff and board members to enter onto and inspect this site during reasonable hours for the purpose of reviewing this application and accompanying plans." And I can't read the signature, but it's a signature. I'm assuming it's.
That's me.
That, that's.
Believe it or not.
Sorry.
After practicing law for 35 years, that's what you get.
Okay.
Yes, that's my signature.
No, no, I apologize, but.
No, no, that's quite right.
It is signed that that's something you're agreeing to.
Yes.
Okay? And I think that's an understanding on our part and on the CEO's part, that you're willing to resolve this. This is not a big deal, which, as you said, Rich, we're trying to do the best we can for the citizens. But, in order to assess what you're asking us to do, is, we need to be able to see it. I, that's just my opinion. Okay? And I think this, this box, this signature box here, says that you guys are willing to do that. You're in agreement with what we're asking you to do if you're, you know, putting this application through. So, you know, we're, we're in a quandary, we have a quandary here. It happened in the last case as well, as you've acknowledged. And I think at the time, we were, I think the CEO was trying to get there, and I think originally, there had been an agreement for him to go on the property, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And, and then all of a sudden, it changed. And we asked you, and you said, "I told my client not to do it." If I'm misstating it, please correct me.
Yeah, I don't recall the circumstances.
You know, but that's just what I heard, anyway. And that's fine. Okay? I'm sure you had your reason, you're representing him, and so on. So, the whole process here is based on trust and, and being able to follow out the process. The process is, you fill in an application, you sign off that, you know, in my mind, this is my word, that you understand that we need to see it, that we can come and, we can come and visit. You know, it was an invitation from you, and we set the right time, and we come in. It doesn't say anything there, in my mind, about going to court to get that. And I'm sure, I'm sure you're corrected, that's a way to do it. So, I think what we're trying to do is resolve this. We don't want to be here, you don't want to be here. This is not an argument anybody wants to get into. And this is our second time that I've been here, that we've been doing this. So, bottom line is.
Can I have one minute?
Sure.
My client?
Sure.
Just shut off your microphone.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, we would ask for a continuance for 30 days, and we will discuss, because obviously, if he's going to go on the property, that needs to come in under the record, all right? And even, he, you know, we might disagree as to what he sees, or how he interprets what he sees. But, so we need a continuance for that purpose, to keep this open, for doing that. And we'll try to work out the details. I can't guarantee that the end of the day, we're going to let him go on, but I need to discuss the details of that more than just the 30-second conversation with my client, the implications of not doing it, and the language that you've pointed out, and all the rest of it. And the only way to really do that, in fairness to everybody, would be to get a continuance until next month. So, if you're amenable to that, as is Mr. Rochelli, and I'm not trying to play a shell game with you. I'm just, I'm being honest. We, we'll talk about it. I think it's, I think it's probably a good thing, but it's my client who makes those decisions. So, but if we let Rick come on, then it has to stay open for that purpose.
Mr. Chair? I ask a question. Matthew Davis or Rick, from the perspective of cease and desist, honor continuance? What are the rules and guidelines on that?
It allows you to continue the, the matter to your next meeting if you choose to do so. I would just caution you, and, no offense, but I would put a limit on the time wait. I mean, waiting 30 days or 28 days to, I'd like a starting point to look at the property. If it is, in fact, and like any other case.
Yep.
Same with the notice of violation, you're given 30 days to rectify the violation. I don't want to be here, I don't want cases to come here, that's the last thing we choose to do, or want to do. We'd rather have the issue rectified. So, as best we can, that's all I can tell you.
Well, I mean, your next, your next meeting is, I assume, right? 30 days from now or approximately?
27th of June.
So, you can't do it before then. And I, I guess I'll say to Mr. Rochelli, if we decide to let you on the property, it would be at least a week before, so that you could present anything to the commission by way of photographs or what have you. We've got a long weekend coming up, you know? So, but are you saying I need to give you a date right now? What is it you're asking of me, Rick?
Well, I think we should have a date for the, for the board to go by as some kind of point that the property can actually be inspected.
I think your point is, you don't want to wait till 30 days or 29 days from now to get the inspection, right?
No, and I shouldn't do that either. So, what is the date of your next meeting?
27th.
The 27th?
Of June.
Okay. So, honor before the 17th of June, that's 10 days before the meeting, we will have either let Mr. Rochelli onto the property to do his inspection, or we will let him know that we're not going to let him on.
So, if you're asking for a continuance to the next meeting, does that mean you're going to come and, we're continuing to the next meeting? That means you are going to come to that meeting?
This hearing, no matter what happens. Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just want.
Oh, yes, of course.
I'd be clear, because we made an arrangement before, as you recall.
Well.
And, no, we did, okay? And I think that's on the record.
Well, there's no reason for us to withdraw this. I mean, withdrawing it would mean that we, everything he thinks is there is junk, and we have to take everything off the property, and then we're going to get sued. This is a different matter than the last one. So, I understand, but I appreciate.
I just want.
Yes, so that we're all on the same wavelength here. Yes.
Yes.
A question for Rick. Going with that there's junk, as you see it, and from what the resident, Mr. Landalina said, which is lawnmowers, riding mowers, et cetera, and cars, is part of the definition of, or is part of the cease and desist a concern with hazardous waste and materials such as motor oil, battery acid, or any other such thing, lubricants? With, with respect to your cease and desist?
No, not really. I mean, that doesn't really, isn't included in the cease and desist. That's a different matter altogether, if there was anything like spilt motor oil or something like that on the property at the time, you know, at the time of inspection. But, that's not included in with the cease and desist. It's strictly the junkyard and the materials kept on the property.
Is such a thing under your purview? Or authority, rather?
Hazardous waste?
I'm not sure. It would come under us if it were wetlands on the property, any other contamination like that, depending on the amount. I mean, everything is relative. Depending on the amount, it would come, probably come under DEP.
And when, and Mr. Landalina, Attorney Landalina?
Yes.
Is it, does your client testify that there is no storage or waste, hazardous waste, such as the motor oil or anything that might fall under?
I can't answer that, and I'd prefer not to ask him that question right now, since I don't know the answer.
Okay. And the last request is, if we could think about a way that, to make this where your client can continue with his hobby, and the town is satisfied with the concerns with zoning, and, and perhaps the ancillary thing of potential hazardous waste, because, you know, we, there are remedies, and we'd hate to see it go down that road, and we'd rather have neighbors and the town and your client continue harmon-
Is it, does your client testify that there is no storage or waste, hazardous waste such as the motor oil or anything that might fall under-
I can't answer that, and I'd, I'd prefer not to ask him that question right now, since I don't know the answer.
Okay. And the last request is if we could think about a way that, to make this where your client can continue with this hobby, and the town is satisfied with the concerns with zoning and, and perhaps the ancillary thing of potential hazardous waste. Because, you know, we, there are remedies, and we'd hate to see it go down that road, and we'd rather have neighbors and the town and your client continue harmoniously as a community.
And we appreciate that, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, question. Attorney Landelina?
Yes.
You or your client, I know the cease and desist, I think, has been out there since March 31st. I would be open to continuance, but I would like to make that date like June 10th. That's 14 days to figure out. Are you amenable to that?
You want a special meeting on June 10th?
We don't need a special meeting, but in terms of establishing a visit date and getting the Z E O. out-
Oh, oh, instead of by the 17th, you want, you want us to be able to work out something?
Yeah, I don't want to wait, yeah, I don't think we should wait for anyone's benefit that long. I think if we can move it up, again, I would much prefer, you know, the Z E O. get out there sooner than that.
Mm-hmm.
Because let's get this behind us.
I guess that we have no objection to that. I mean, you're not going to be able to do anything with the information until the next meeting, but-
Understood.
But you want to see progress, I guess. Yes. You're all shaking your head, yes.
We also need to get things ready for our packet, and we have a-
Right.
As you know, we have a big window there to get it out to these people.
Yeah.
Get the work done. So, I think, Rich's recommendation, the governor, if you agree with it.
Yeah, that's fine, June 10th.
Rick, on a cease and desist, if by June 10th you're able to inspect the property, and it's within following zoning rules, can you rescind the cease and desist if they're compliant, or do they have to come back for a meeting? How does that work?
Well, it's like any other violation. If they're complying with the regulations, they're complying with the regulations. He, if he chooses to come back and before you, at that point in time, they can do so. But if it's compliant, it's like anything else. The reason for the enforcement is to rectify violations. That's ultimately what we're looking for. So, and in the past, we've given time to rectify those violations. So, it, or the issues, I guess I should say. So, the, ultimately, we're only here to, to rectify the violation.
Got it, understood, thank you.
So, my understanding of what I just heard is, and I know this for a fact, yes, if he withdraws the cease and desist, our appeal is moot, and then this matter is over with. So, but-
Which is our, all of our, to all of our benefit.
Right. You're, you're satisfied, Rick's satisfied, we're satisfied.
Absolutely.
The neighbors are protected, whatever.
That's all we're here for.
Yep.
Try to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, what's the word? A motion for continuance based on the applicant and the zoning enforcement officer to connect and inspect by June 10th and continue to next meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, you probably should, if anyone's here. I know that we had somebody, I would dispense with, you don't, you can come back next time if you need to. I don't, maybe just announce if anybody wants to speak, because they would be there.
I may just refer to the staff, Matt, Mr. Davis?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Is there, should we offer the opportunity to-
Well, I think just a matter, just a matter of courtesy, I think you may want to offer before you actually vote on a continuance.
Sounds great.
So, withdraw my continuance motion and allow public to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds great. So, at this point, we'll have anybody that wants to respond, either pro or con, to the appeal that's, that's on the table right now. That's not on the table, that's, that's, that we're discussing right now. Please come up and sit at the table. If you guys could just vacate your seats just for a few minutes here. Anybody here to, wants to come up and, and speak to this issue? Is there anybody here for a second time that wants to come up and speak to the issue? Anybody for a third time wants to come up and speak to the issue, either pro or con? I'll close the audience participation part of it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion for continuance to the next meeting on June 27th, 2022, provided that the Z E O. is able to inspect on or prior to June 10th of 2022. Seconded by Catherine.
Any discussion? The secretary, could you please?
Sir? Tim Neville?
Four.
Charles Masterbirdy?
Four.
Kelly Davis?
Four.
Catherine Plopper?
Four.
And Richard Storni?
Four.
That is 5-0-0, sir.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, next on our agenda will be 425 Hazard Avenue. It's not a legal notice, but you can, you can certainly read it if you want to.
Yeah, for, for the record, Z B A 2022-4-28, 425 Hazard Ave. Auto location approval for transfer of used car dealer's license, Zach Dupuy. Hope I pronounced that right, I apologize if I did not. D B A Runway Motors LLC, applicant Hazardville Trade Village LLC, owner, map 92, lot 67, H V B G Zone.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Zachary Dupuy, 19 Ridge Road, Enfield, Connecticut.
Okay. And if you're ready, go ahead.
I'll read off my Z B A narrative. I think you have a copy of it from the packet here. So, I'm the owner of Runway Motors LLC. We currently hold a used car dealer's license at our original location in 361 South Center Street, Windsor Locks, Connecticut. That lease has come to an end, so our plan is to relocate to 2 Mill Street, AKA 425 Hazard Ave. Let's see. Quick background, hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 10 to 6, Saturday, 10 to 3. It's just myself, there's no other employees for parking concerns. I have a copy of the approval. It was approved in 2019, so it's the same use, it seems pretty straightforward. There were four conditions set by planning and zoning that I'm agreeable to. Parking lot spaces will be striped, that has been done. No additional signage along Hazard Ave, that's agreeable. A maximum of 12 cars may be parked on the site for sale at any one time, that's agreeable. And the last one is approval for the sale of cars and not for the repair of motor vehicles not sold on the premise, so we will not be offering any retail repair work to the public or anything like that.
Anything else you'd like to say, or?
I think that's all.
Questions of the commission?
Mr. Chairman? Just, how do you get the cars to sell? Where do you, where do you get them from, just generally?
I go to Southern Auto Auction, Route 5 in East Windsor, and there's a Desa Auto Auction in Framingham, Massachusetts.
So, these are all operating vehicles?
Yeah.
Already approved?
Yeah.
And roadworthy?
Yeah. You know, they're, they're generally trade-ins from new car dealerships, so like the Lea Stores in Enfield and stuff like that, people, people trade their car and buy a new one. So, generally, running and driving and just needing very minimal is the idea.
Okay. Do you inspect them when you bring them into town?
Yeah, we're required by law for, it's called a K-208 safety check form. You know, brakes, windshield wipers, headlights, taillights, stuff like that.
And if you find something wrong with the vehicle, how do you correct that?
I fix it myself, I'm a certified mechanic.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Neville? I was out there the other day, just to take a look at it-
Yep.
To see the lay of the land. And I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You said you fixed up their minor repairs, I'm guessing?
Yeah.
Okay. Which is the, where is the location for doing that? Is it in the building behind it?
If you have the, if you have a copy of the map there.
The map here.
When you pull in down Mill Street, the parking is to the left, the building is to the right, it's the rear of that building. So, on the, if you drive around-
It's in the rear of that building?
Correct.
So, is the garage door, so to speak, or?
Yeah, the garage door is on the, if you're driving in, and the building is to your right, there's a man door on the back of the building, and around the corner, that's where the garage door is.
That's why I didn't see that.
Yep.
Okay. The other thing is you, there's a stipulation to strike the parking spaces.
Yep.
Okay, and I noticed there's probably double that many parking spaces. There, there are some are for one of the companies there, and the others-
Yeah, I think there's, there's 20, there's 26 line spaces altogether, four of them are for the pellet shop, I believe, so 22 go with, go with that, that space that I'm occupying.
How long ago were they lined? Because basically, they, whatever paint is on there is on a lot of sand and gravel.
Yeah, I stopped there and just checked it out and took a picture of it on my way here. It looks like there's a lot of sand and gravel that's just covering it up, so I think if I go over and sweep it with a push broom, it'll be, it'll be easier to see.
No, no, it was really, it was, it's hard to see some of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would just make sure that that's taken care of, because it's-
Yeah.
The other thing is that there's, behind the double spaces there, the 12 spaces, there's a whole row of, a hodgepodge of different kinds of vehicles there.
Yeah.
I was wondering how you'd even get the cars in and out of that back space there? There's just a lot of, of vehicles there.
Yeah.
Different kinds.
I think there's, there's technically enough room where the spaces would be three deep, so there, there is room for the second row. If you had a second row of vehicles, where you should be able to back out in, in between that.
Okay, I just-
But I don't, I don't plan to have that many cars. I mean, I think right now on my lot, I have six cars for sale with the ongoing supply chain issues and everything, we're affected just like everybody else, so.
I understand. That's about it, thank you very much.
Further questions of the commission? None, hearing none? All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone that wishes to speak against it? One more call for anyone that wishes to speak at all? Okay, hearing none?
Move to close.
Second?
Okay. Can we take a vote on that, please?
Do you want to have discussion?
Discussion?
Oh, sure, discussion.
One second.
Well, I think we take a vote to close, and then we would have discussion, so that's-
You're right.
All right. Andrew Urbanoits?
Yes.
Timothy Neville?
Yes.
Charles Masterbirdy?
Yes.
Kelly Davis?
Yes.
Rich Storni?
Yes.
Okay, now it's discussion.
I think my only question, and just from, from the protection of the applicant, what constitutes a repair? Right? The windshield wipers, headlights, I mean, those, are those repairs, or are we talking about, and this might be where I rely on some of you that have been on this more than I have? Is it more the heavy-duty type things, like oil changes?
Well, I mean, he's, he would transfer a license, a general repair license, so he can do anything that he needs to do under that license.
No, I'm just thinking in terms of that stipulation number four that was on here. Or, no repair of any type shall occur. Okay, without his license, okay.
The previous approval you're talking?
No, for this one, the draft motion, so I'm, I'm good. I just saw the, the rest of it. My mistake. He's good. Answered my own question.
I mean, at this point, I'm not sure whether we can continue with these conditions anyways.
Would they have to go back?
Well, I think we're just determining whether the use-
Needs the-
Is, is, yeah, is able to be here. So, I, I think this was done under a different statutory-
Okay.
-regime, so I doubt, I guess that would be, the, the, these were, that were applied by the special permit, I mean, they're, they're bound to those.
Right, right, to the permit itself.
Yeah, they're bound to the permit itself.
Okay.
But I don't think we can condition our Z B A approval with, with that.
Understood.
But he's still conditioned, because-
He's got the license.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't add conditions.
We, we can't add to the conditions, and the conditions are there.
Right.
So, that's-
He's willing to-
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure he was covered, he is, so.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So, we-
Okay. Okay. All right, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Andrew Urbanoits?
Yes.
Tim Neville?
Yes.
Charles Masterbirdy?
Yes.
Kelly Davis?
Yes.
And Rich Storni?
Yes.
5-0-0. You are all set, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I gotta find those papers.
I don't know if he has that.
I may not have them in here.
I can ask staff if they have the, no, let's see, it's here. I just saw it.
No, that's just-
Is this, is this, this is just?
Yeah.
No, there's 25 Hazard Ave, this is 425, right here. Yeah.
Right, but this is in the, this is in the signature page, it's just the voting column.
Oh, okay.
She has a different page for that.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to have Mary Ann handle that.
Matthew?
Well, I mean, Matt? That's the question for staff. Staff?
Do you have the motion page?
For the signatures?
Signatures? There should be four of them with the-
Yeah, that's just the voting.
No, that's what, that's what we use, Rich.
Yeah, that's it.
That's the form.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just, just, just sign.
I'll catch up after.
I think we should complete that now.
All right, we'll send it.
It was, it was this, this document.
Well, this is the voting one too, so I'll just have him sign the vote.
These are the motion ones here.
Same ones we have here.
Same ones?
Right. But we need the one that, this one corresponds to the applicant that was just here. This is the doc, okay.
Yeah, and there's a whole bunch of different copies.
Well, that, that has, let's use a clean copy and sign on that.
There you go.
And-
The one we just threw, right?
Right. And we, we need the secretary to fill in the, he needs to fill in the, the reason for approval.
Yep.
I don't sign that one, the one that you just approved?
Yeah.
I don't sign that one, I didn't vote.
Right, and so the-
I signed the first one, the one you voted for.
The, the reason for, for approval, okay.
That would be the continuation of the dealer of the-
Correct. Can, can, just, it's a transfer of an ongoing operation.
Yeah.
I'm just a sitter.
Yeah.
Would you keep these down here?
Yeah, I don't know what, what's been used. Thanks.
And then I'll catch up on the other one.
Oh, I see, I didn't come.
I'll catch up on the first one.
You got, you signed it right, right?
Yeah, I signed that one.
There you go.
Throw that one back.
Twenty-five Hazard Avenue.
Right. So we're gonna call forward twenty-five Hazard Avenue. And Mr. Secretary will read the ZBA number.
ZBA twenty twenty-two oh five oh six, twenty-five Hazard Ave. Request for general repairs, location approval. AAA Club Alliance, Inc., applicant Paramount Realty Services, Inc., owner MAP forty-five, Lot eight, BR zone according to the materials submitted under ZBA twenty twenty-two dash oh five oh six.
State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Dave Zayaks. I'm a professional engineer and principal with FA Hesketh Associates. Our office is over in East Granby. And I'm here tonight representing AAA Club Alliance. And indirectly, the Paramount Realty Service is the owner of Enfield Commons. This, this location is the new, brand-new AAA facility that is located next to what is Home Sense now. You're probably familiar with it. It's been under construction now for, for almost a year. We're here really to kind of get all the paperwork straightened out as your staff reported to you on five twelve. You have a written report. I was not involved with the original go-around, so I don't know why they did what they did. But they came in here for a limited repairs license. With a different type of a facility, had more bays than the ones you see out there now. That was obviously never constructed. They, they came to us because we, I've been working on Enfield Commons since nineteen eighty-seven. So they came to me. And we reoriented the site as you see it today. And they actually came in with a new prototype which has less bays. It only has three bays. I think the original one had eight bays or whatever. But they're looking to do general repairs here. They will do everything from oil changes to brake replacement to shock absorbers, things of that nature that you have, like typical in the other centers in town, like Goodyear and things of that nature. So they need to get that paperwork straightened out. They need a general repairs, operation license, and then they need to go back to motor vehicle and get that straightened out. This type of facility was obviously approved by your planning and zoning commission as a special use permit. And it's sitting out there, ready for the paperwork to be cleaned up and a couple of the punch list items with staff. And we're ready to go. So I would ask that you approve this, this evening. And then it's, and it's up to them to go back to the motor vehicle department.
Thank you. Questions of the commission?
Just a quick question. I was out there yesterday. It looks beautiful. It really does. The question was, unless I misheard you, you said it doesn't, it originally had eight bays and it doesn't have that now, it has three bays?
Yeah, the, the building that we built, it has three full bays. The previous one, I think, had eight bays. It was a longer building. But they, they've changed their model. Their, you know, marketing and modeling and things of that nature.
Doesn't it have four in the back and four in the front? I rode around it and there's this.
Those are drive-through bays.
Oh, they're drive-throughs?
Yeah, they're drive-through bays, yeah. I don't think, well, maybe you want, maybe you could squeeze a couple of small cars in there, but it's, I think it's intended to do one car at a time.
I know, I know the doors in the back are looking for a larger vehicle.
Yeah. I'm not sure, to be honest with you. I've been told it's three bays.
I know, just as long as I wasn't saying things.
Yeah. It has the wrong doors on it, by the way. The doors are, they're gonna be much nicer when the real doors come in from wherever they have to come in.
Is this what's awaiting the opening?
Yeah, bait, well, if they want to open the full facility, Rick was kind enough to allow them to open the, the office part, because you can still go there as a AAA customer, you know, like, like the old building that's, I think, closed now. Is this, is that closed? Yeah. So the off, there's an office part and then there's a, a repair part.
Thank you very much.
Further questions of the board?
Any concerns from your perspective, Rick, from what you've seen, or?
Not on my part. It's simply a, it was approved in two thousand and eighteen, I believe. It's just a different orientation of the building, so there's a different site plan that has to be signed off on. And the approval, the representative at the time asked for limited. It was approved as limited, but they really need the general repair and that's all it really is. It's simply a technicality that has to be approved by ZBA at this point.
Okay. One more call. Any further questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor or against? One more call to the audience. Seeing none. Do we have any motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Or motion to close.
Excuse me, a motion to close the, the hearing.
Second.
We need a different second because Rev's not seated. Okay, thank you. Can we take a vote?
I will.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now discussion? Any? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve ZBA twenty twenty-two oh five oh six.
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call on the vote to approve?
Andrew Urbanoits.
Yes.
Tim Neville.
Yes.
Charles Master Birdy?
Yes.
Kelly Davis?
Yes.
Rich Droni?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
You're all set.
Thank you, good night.
I'm gonna pass one on. There's too many papers. That's the one, that's the one.
And the, the reason would, would be it's just a change in a license type. Okay.
There you go, Phil. There you go.
Back in your stack. Just circulate that.
That was to, for the other one?
Yup.
Have to write in your motion by hand on that, too?
I have it on my other.
Okay.
That's for the first one.
Yup.
Junkyard. That's a junkyard.
We're ready to move.
That was the continuance one from earlier. I'll write that in.
You're gonna write it in?
I'll write it in.
Oh, okay.
I have it on my other notes.
I usually don't sign it.
There you go, now that our paperwork's done. So we can move on to one sixty, yeah, one sixty Spring Street, and we already read the legal notice in. So I will just read that a variance can be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance and where strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in a hardship. A hardship exists where the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land differently from other properties and where use of the property or reasonable use of the land would be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed or financial hardships cannot by law be considered as a reason for granting a variance. Can the applicants state your name and address for the record?
Yes.
Red means on, got it.
Probably close it to you if you want.
Good?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name's Andrew J. Crane, AJ Crane. And I own a Crane Construction Company based in Chicopee, Massachusetts. I live at twenty-three Rich Street in Chicopee. And my office is at eight twenty-one East Main Street in Chicopee. I'm here representing Kelly Fredette Lumber and Dave Weeks and Dan Sullivan, General Manager.
Is, Mr. Weeks, are you planning to talk if you, no, he's, he's gonna do everything?
Unless you ask me a question.
So, okay, go.
No, I just wanted to be sure if he was gonna speak. I wanted his name and address in the record, so.
Understood.
If he decides later to speak, we'll, we'll do that.
We're the owner of the property.
Right.
Yeah. You just said you weren't gonna speak.
Yeah.
So we got a little presentation up on there. It's nothing too fancy, but it's a lot easier for visual aid purposes, right?
Sure.
We've got it right here.
Yeah, we have it in front.
Front of us.
You can take.
Oh, you do?
They got it right here.
They're right here.
Okay, great. Oh, got it, makes sense. Slide, please. How do I do that? Oh, here? Okay. Got it? Perfect. So this is just a quick project narrative. There's obviously a very, a much more lengthy one in your packet that explains everything in detail. But essentially, what's happening is Kelly Fredette is growing. They're doing very well. The economy is booming, right? And two of their smaller warehouses that are on the Spring, Spring Street property, which is connected through the Prospect Street entrance, are, they're dilapidated buildings. They're not in good shape. The dry, dry goods that they store in there, you know, it's very expensive stuff, windows, doors, cabinets, things like that. You know, they get damaged and they are looking to build a larger warehouse to take those, the place of those two and, you know, such increased efficiency with traffic flow and shield the trucks from the street and things like that. This new building is about, it's under ten thousand square feet. It's nine thousand one hundred and thirty-nine square feet. So that's essentially, in a nutshell, what's happening. So this is the existing property. The aerial view is from Spring, Spring Street over the residential property. The two buildings that we're looking to demo are the buildings on the tree line up against the highway. There's one in the front corner and then there's one, the red one with the dark roof. Those two are proposed to come down, to get raised. There's a close-up view from the street and the gate. So that vegetation, all that gate and the red building and the lean-to behind it and then the red building in the, in behind, those plan to come down. So it's obviously, they're not great-looking structures. This is at the end. It's the last address on the Spring Street. Has everybody driven by it or at least?
Yes.
Well, you can't drive by, at least stopped and turned around and came back. Just for clarity, that gate is locked all the time. It's only used for emergency purposes or for some reason they're doing work in the back, like repaving, or they have to reroute traffic. And that is, that is the goal moving forward also. This, this gate, not this gate, but a gate just like it, newer, will be a rolling gate and will stay locked. The only ones that will have keys are the fire department and their employees just in case. Okay? And please stop me just if you guys have any questions. I don't know if that's okay or not, but. Again, this is a little graphical representation of the existing conditions. The peach area is, that's the truck entrance. So if you drive through the prospect, off the end of Prospect Tree, through their existing warehouse by the rail spur, the trucks come all the way down through there. The green is the existing building. That is right on the property line next to air gas. That stays. Yellow and purple get demoed. And the red block is just pointing out where the emergency gate is to remain. So as you can see, coming through the peach area, a fifty-four-foot-long tag-along truck has a hard time with that purple building there turning around. It can't do it, right? So you get a lot of this and five-point turns and things like that. And it's a lot more visible from the street. This is the site plan, obviously not a great representation, but the hashed area is the new building. We can get into that a little bit more detail later. This is just not for construction because we don't want to go through the whole purpose of construction-ready plans until you folks are happy with the design. But essentially, this is, it's a block building with some basic windows, a couple overhead doors, and, and really that's it. Much cleaner-looking building than what's there now. This is the proposed layout. Again, same exact thing. Trucks come through the peach area, check in at their, at their gatehouse off, off the end of Prospect Street. There's a much bigger turnaround area up against the railroad and the water and the highway on the other side, essentially totally shielded from the street, from the residential zone. The red arrow, again, is an emergency gate. It will only be used in emergency situations or in a very, very unique one-off situation. So the loading zone, which is the yellow and black hashed area, that's where the, that's where the loading docks are. So this building is uniquely positioned there, and this is the reason that we're asking for the first two variances, is the topography works out on the site where if we were to slide, slide the building back away from the street and thus away from the residential zone, the loading docks don't work out. The building would be, end up being too high, sticking out of the ground, and the loading docks would not work. Elevation-wise. It actually works out perfectly where we don't have to put in a French drain, no retaining walls, no anything like that, so there's no change in grade or drainage or runoff to the area. And there's an engineer's documentation that certifies that there's no additional drainage or runoff issues or anything like that. The entire, the entire property slopes to the back corner, off toward, toward the railroad's tracks. So this is a, a small narrative about six point ten point one and six point ten point two A, which is the front yard setback, side yard setback and residential zone buffer. So we talked about the topography on the site and why the building has to be up front. It's actually exactly in line with that exact, with that new, with the existing red barn that's, it's scheduled to be demoed. It's also in line with the warehouse next to it and one of the air gas buildings next to that. So that's, we can't slide in any further back because of the topography. We can't get any further away from the residential zone, even though we'd like to. But good thing for us is the residential zone is on the other side of Spring Street. It's not neighboring. The side yard setback is both buildings that are, that are scheduled to be demoed are closer to the side lot line, right, than our new building is. And we intentionally left enough room between the existing warehouse, which was the green structure, and the new warehouse, where emergency vehicles won't have any problem. We have talked to the fire chief, where the long fire trucks, ladder trucks have no problem making that radius, to turn right in there, doing their thing. They have enough hose to get all the way around. We've had multiple discussions with them about that. So that's the reason for the side yard setback. Even though we did get a little further away than the buildings that are scheduled to take down. These are some of the more unique zoning ordinances that were pointed out that we want to address, just to make sure we didn't miss anything. Parking, loading and landscaping. Six ten two, six ten six, six ten seven, ten ten eight, ten ten twenty. I think I said that wrong, but you guys, you guys get what I'm saying, all right? So the paragraph addresses them one by one there, but essentially, the entire site is a giant loading zone, right? We don't need any specific loading areas like you would at a, at a CVS or something like that, because this is specifically what this, what this building is designed for. Additionally, parking, there are no extra employees that are going to be required. No, it's not a public access site. There are no extra trucks, no extra anything. Thus, hopefully eliminating the requirement for design of parking lots and things like that. Additionally, as a side note, we've already dealt with the building inspector. This building, by law, is required to have a bathroom. We were able to get a state, the state building inspector to waive that. We were, nobody's gonna be working in the building. We were able to prove that bathrooms were close enough, so we already have that in place. Also a good thing for us, because there's no, no plumbing like anywhere near there, so. As far as the landscaping, the, as you can see from some of the aerial views and stuff, the entire site is impervious right now. There's actually a calculation on the site plan. We were able to, in the, in the space, actually, I can go back here. In the space where all the vegetated area is, that's all overgrown on the streets, on the Spring Street side. Can you guys see what I'm seeing there?
Yes.
Okay, great. So that building is substantially larger than that building, but it's a clean face on that building, nothing but split face center black. And the area we have scheduled on our site plan, on the Spring Street side of the entire building will be loomed and seeded, which makes the, makes less impervious area. So a little bit more pervious. I don't even know if that's a thing, but a little bit less impervious. And that'll be maintained by Kelly Fredette moving forward. Just to, you know, strip the grass a little nicer for the, for the neighborhood, the one house that's across the street on the dead end, so. That's kind of what we have prepared. You know, it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's a big loading zone. It's a big warehouse site. Kelly Fredette needs it. The building, the two buildings that are there need repair badly. And they're, they're not efficient at all for Kelly Fredette. And the building is raised a little bit because of the topograph, the proposed building, and it'll keep, like, for example, the building that's on the water side, that's right now, that building floods. They tried putting curbing around it. It's just not, it's not efficient. And they can't make the turn with their trucks. This will be much better for the, for the applicant, much better for the neighborhood, and that's what we're proposing. So I'd be to field any questions.
Questions of the commission? No, Mr. Neville?
I was down there yesterday. I, I compliment you guys. It, I appreciate you putting those white marks down there so I could figure out exactly where it was going to be.
Yeah.
And I was gonna take a tape measure out, see if it was going up to that, the original building that's over there to the right there. It, it looks approximately the, the same distance from.
It's scheduled to be in line. The faces are, yeah.
My wife commented that they should clean up the shrubbery that's overgrown down there, which I assumed you guys would do anyway, just to.
Yeah.
But that's just an aside. When I was looking at the map that we had, and you show the, on the Spring Street side, the red building that's.
Existing or proposed?
Existing right now.
Yup. So the red is, it just calls out the emergency gate.
And then, and then there's a, and it next to is like, I'm gonna say a shit.
Like a lean-to, yeah. That's the yellow structure there.
Yeah, because that's what you were pointing at and saying that's being demoed. My question was, I think you just answered it.[1680.04] My question was, I think you just answered it. You're looking at it as one building.
Yes.
Getting rid of both of those.
They're attached, yeah.
Fine.
Yeah, all... Well, if you're counting that as a separate building, it would be three, but we consider it one on the site plan.
That's fine, as long as we're interpreting it the same way we are.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the shrubbery in the back, I was trying to see where you were... Where the end of the property was. It looks like the shrubbery in the back is really overgrown behind... It looks like a wood there, the white... The red building there you're taking... That was the one I'm talking about. The one next to that is what the arrow was pointing to. So both of those are going, plus the red one in the back.
Yes, all these.
Okay.
These are actually inside the proposed building.
Yes, they are.
This one's off the back.
Yeah.
But we couldn't make the turn with trucks.
You have... It looks like lumber that's stored in those white...
Yep.
Right by your finger there.
Yeah.
Is that still gonna be a storage place?
Yeah, there'll be cubes of lumber still there, ready.
Oh, okay.
They come off either the railcars or the wholesale trucks.
Does the property go back where those trees are? Does it go back further? Is that gonna be clear?
Those are off the back of the property.
That's not on your property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Those are the railroad.
That's fine. I just couldn't see.
Everything on our property is paved right now.
Okay.
There's a fence there. The other side of the fence.
Yeah, well, I couldn't see the fence where it was.